Mike Serrano. I'd like to call the Committee of the Whole for Monday, June 8th, 2015, for the City of Geneva, into order. My name is Rich Marx and I am the second Wald- Alderman, along with Alderman Cummings. We're on the far west side of town. Please note, every Alderman is here, except Alderman Radicki, which who did tell us he would not be here. First item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from May 18th, 2015, and May 26th, 2015. Moved by Alderman Sino?
Second.
Second by Alderman Cummings. Any comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous, that's good. Items of business. 3A. Recommend approval of special event application from Geneva Public Library for Ice Cream Social, August 5th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Bruno, second by Alderman Cummings. Comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's approved unanimously. 3B is recommend approval of special event application from Fox River Trail Runners for Summer Sunset 5K Run, July 29th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kilburg, seconded by Alderman Cummings.
Look at that, it's so easy. These guys are waiting to be here all night, it's amazing.
Yeah. Do you guys have anything to say?
I think it's a good event.
Up to the mic.
Thank you, I think it's a good event. I did it as a runner, and I'm a new Fox River Trail Runner, and so I'm excited that I can go back and tell my club that you approved our event.
Awesome.
Tie dye t-shirts, so sign up.
We need your name for the...
Oh, Denise Hatcher.
Alderman Kilburg.
I believe this must be approaching about 20 years for the event, I think.
I believe so.
And again, the proceeds from this, I believe, benefits the high school athletic program yet, doesn't it?
Right, we have three different, the Fox River Trail Runners...
Sports boosters.
Right, the Fox River Trail Runners, we give money every year to the Batavia Food Pantry. Last year we gave them $14,000, and then we just wrote out a check, it was bigger than that, but I don't remember the number for the Special Olympics. We fund scholarships, we just funded five scholarships for people that will continue to run or have run, and then we also fund the high school.
Geneva All Sports Boosters.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Alderman Cummings.
Is this the race that ends on the track?
This is the one that ends on the track.
It's a good one.
It's a good one, thank you, it's a good one, yes. I'm a new race director, Karen and I are co-directing, so this is one of the first things I'm doing, so it's overwhelming but scary and everything.
Are you running, Don?
Are you running it?
I have before, I'm looking at the date now, I'm looking at the calendar.
It's a Wednesday, last Wednesday, it's good. I've ordered good weather.
I will be in town, I think.
You haven't answered the question.
He's hedged that so well.
The registration just opened, so feel free to sign up. Our next decision is what color tie dye shirt, it's one of the few races where you get a tie dye shirt, so not the boring, you know, stuff, it's tie dye, it's gonna be good.
Excellent.
I believe this is what, I believe last year, the last few years, you've had over 600 runners for this?
Yes, we have about 600 runners, and then as a mom whose kids are old, it's really exciting too, because we have, well, some of the high school kids are really fast, but then we have a mile and a half mile, so just trying to instill a healthy lifestyle during the summer in all ages.
Good luck.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the day's? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Item 3C. Recommend approval of special event liquor licenses for Swedish Days, June 23rd through 28th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Bruno, seconded by Alderman Sino. Comments, questions?
Mr. Sherman?
Yes, Alderman Singer.
Being a member of American Legion Post 75, I'd like to rescue myself from this vote.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we have aye-dons. Next item on the agenda is 3D. Recommend draft resolution authorizing execution of contract with Lannert Group, Inc., in an amount not to exceed 19,000 professional design service for welcome signs, and mayor's appointment of two Aldermen to the signed working group. Motion by Alderman Maladra?
Second.
Second by Alderman Sino.
And Mr. Chairman, for the benefit of the committee, the Aldermen who have agreed to serve are Alderman Kilburg and Alderman Burghart, so we thank you both.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thanks for asking.
Comments, questions? Alderman Simone.
Thank you, Chairman, Marx. The, on, the 19, 19,000, is that just to get a creative design? That's not installation, fabrication, all that other stuff? That's just for them to come up with creative ideas?
It brings this all the way to construction drawings, specifications, that would be able to be bidded by a construction contractor.
Is our plan to have the same design for every one of these signs, or is it...
We're planning primary and secondary signage. 18 altogether, 18 locations have been targeted altogether, with nine primary and 10 secondary.
And I noticed in the contract, two issues I have concern with, one is reimbursable expenses. Is that over, the 19,000?
No, we're recommending not to exceed 19,000, and we spoke with Mr. Lannert about that, that there's no open-ended contracts. He has to come in at that price, and he understands that.
Okay, and lastly, I notice also in the contract, that whatever we decide on the design, we don't own it? They own it?
We asked about that also. They own it up until the time that the contract is concluded and payment in full, and that's very typical, we saw that in most of the bids, because of the fact that you could stop midway and then take that design and try to incorporate parts of it or all of it, so it's just a standard design speak, and when you pay for it, then it would be ours. If it took us several years to complete it, that design is ours.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we owned it. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Alderman Sino.
Do we have any idea how much the total project's gonna cost?
We don't, and that's part of the design, because there's definitely a lot of ideas floating around with respect to materials and sizing, and as part of the design, we're going to understand what that means with respect to our budget, and that'll be part of the process to flush that through.
We budgeted 50,000 for this year, figuring that part of it would be for design, and if we had any leftover, that we would try to get at least a few signs fabricated, so we'll have to get obviously quotes on that as well, so we'll go as far as we can, and then we'll bring forward a recommendation in next year's budget, if we can. All right, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All right, hearing none, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item 3E. Recommend draft resolution authorizing contract with Meyer Paving, Inc., in the amount of 15,630 for the Fabian Road pathway repairs.
So moved.
Motion by Cummings, seconded by Sino. Richard, Mr. Ben, did you have comments to make, or?
Not regarded as for the Southeast Industrial Park.
Okay, any other questions on this matter?
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Knowing the Meyer family personally, I'd like to rescue myself from this vote.
Okay, that is fine. Any other comments? Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I remember there was some discussion about the Birm and the home, or the homeowners association, this doesn't fall under any type of liability for the neighborhood, right? This is all ours?
Correct, sir. The bike paths within that area are not covered with any SSA.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So it's unanimous. Item 3F. Recommend draft resolution authorizing purchase of...
Highly thickener.
Highly thickener, screw from Walker Process that it costs not to exceed 9,255, that's a good name there. I need a motion. Motion by Alderman Sino, seconded by Alderman Maladra. Questions? Alderman Singer.
Thank you. Richard, there are two of these screws that are operable at this point in time, and one is being replaced?
Correct.
All right, what is the life expectancy of these products?
There really is no set life expectancy, it's somewhere between the range of 10 to 15 years, and the reason why the life expectancy varies is because the material that this process moves is highly caustic, and it can vary with whatever industrial use or domestic use is being generated through the community at this time. This would be the first time that they have been replaced, though, since they were installed, so they've, they're about due, and unfortunately, there's not a lot of preventative maintenance that can be performed on top of these, other than at the pumps and motors themselves, where there's grease fittings and whatnot, that can get maintained.
Well, the other one has been functioning since 1999, do you think eventually that too is going to be needed?
That one will be, that one will probably be brought forward in the 20, the next fiscal year budget, for removal and replacement. We're trying to stagger them out, so they, in 15 years, the plant operators aren't going through the same issue of having them both become marginal or questionable at the same time.
Do you have any fear that this product may become obsolete in time?
No, this is actually, this technology dates back to the Roman times. It really is, perhaps not with these alloys, but this process of moving solids uphill for, is a proven technology, so it's not going anywhere.
Okay, very good, thank you for that explanation, sir. Thank you, Mr. Sherman.
Anyone else with comments, questions? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is unanimous. Item G. Recommend draft resolution authorizing professional service agreement with Stanley Consultants, Inc., in the amount of 252,200 for Southeast Substation Engineering.
So...
Motion by Maladra?
Second.
Second by Kilburg. I know you wanted to make a brief present...
Yes, sir.
Presentation first, to bring everybody up to speed on this.
This presentation is to accommodate that there are two new Aldermen that are up on a city council. The Southeast Industrial Park was identified back in April of 2014, during the strategic plan session, the city council established 97 goals for staff to plan for and accommodate in future budgets, and there was some consternation among staff in making these goals a reality, so in November of 2014, we had a second session where we reviewed, staff reviewed those goals with the city council, and the city council winnowed those goals down to eight primary goals. The Southeast Industrial Park, which is the area commonly bordered between Kirk Road to the west, the West Chicago corporate boundary with, to the east, Route 38 to the north, and Fabian Parkway to the south, is the area commonly referred to as the Southeast Industrial Park by staff. The next two items you see being presented by the Electrical Utility Superintendent are directly related to establishing a sub, an electrical substation within that Southeast Industrial Park to initiate future redevelopment and bring forth power to that area, which currently does, it does not have a power supply, it's not connected to the city's electrical utility infrastructure.
Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, you're gonna have an easy week next week so far, let me tell you, man. Well, then we have this other thing that someone pushed off till next week. Item 3H. Recommend draft resolution to enter into an agreement with COMED, and pay a non-refundable deposit of 60,000 for engineering design services to supply the future Southeast development substation. Motion? Motion by Alderman Maladra?
Second.
Second by Alderman Bruno. Questions, comments?
I have just one.
Yes, go ahead.
It's not like we have a choice, right?
No. But I, just, can I clarify that? Because I think at the bottom of the memo, it did say there's a possibility that some of it could be offset against future costs if we move forward enough?
Quickly.
If we move quickly enough?
Correct, if we move quickly enough.
What's their, what's the recapture, I mean, how, what does COMED consider quickly? Oh, now he's going back.
The report is good for about 90 days.
Okay.
For, at that point in time, once they do the design, the city would then have 90 days to commit to COMED, to initiate the design engineering, and bring forth the energy to the, to the area. The 60,000 is part of the overall cost, so it's not 60,000 plus the 600,000, it's within that 600,000 estimated price range. Is that about summing up?
Well, you didn't get it enough.
The only thing I'd like to add to that is that the 600,000 estimate's a very, very rough estimate. The 60,000 will do the engineering, which will allow them to establish the final price.
Okay. Alderman Simone.
Thanks, Chairman. I remember when we voted on this, you gotta help me with my memory, wasn't there a worst-case scenario that if we didn't do this, that we could utilize this equipment and stuff somewhere else? In other words, we're not gonna get stuck with this investment if that area didn't take off?
This is engineering.
I think he was talking about the equipment that we purchased.
This is engineering.
Prior item on the agenda.
But the equipment, we, we agreed in the equipment for this area, right?
Well, again, the two proposals you see for, before you tonight are simply engineering.
Right.
So the design engineering basically is if we, when we give them the green light to start moving forward, we start incurring costs, so there is no equipment being purchased at this time. The deposit with COMED is basically, is a good faith deposit with COMED, so they can initiate the engineering fee, because as most of us that don't live in a city of Geneva, no COMED does nothing for free.
Gotcha, okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I know that, I just recall a piece of this puzzle, when we made the commitment that there was a worst-case scenario that even if we did not expand that area...
You're correct.
The equipment we could use somewhere else.
Some of the equipment, the first pieces of equipment that we would buy under this would be the transformers, because they're the long, long lead time items.
Right.
We anticipate that in the 1, 1.2 million price range, but we currently have some very old obsolete transformers that we use for backup right now, if we were to lose a substation. We could certainly use one of these at one of the substations, and keep the other one as a backup unit.
You've cleared the cobwebs, thank you.
It's a very expensive backup, though.
Yes, yes.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, a point of order?
Yes, go ahead, Alderman Singer.
Is there any, why is there not a, an estimated cost for the following items dealing with I, J, K, L, and M? An estimated cost for those? Should those not have been included?
I'm sorry, you're gonna...
On item I, J, and K, some of the purchases of transformers and switch gears, the agenda does not have dollar amounts tied to it. I think the packet does, but I don't think it's in the motion, and I think that's what our question is right now. And we can put that cost in there, because you do have some...
It's as needed.
Yeah, it's as needed.
There is an estimated cost, which is the budget amount. We buy them as we need them, so if we have failures that need to be replaced, we buy them then. If we have new customers coming in that commit to pay for them, we buy them then, and that's all we buy. The dollar amounts are in the breakdown in the back of the packet.
Oh, okay.
For the individual items.
All right, I got you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Sherman.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll go to item 3I. Recommend draft resolution authorizing bid award for 2015, 2016 purchase of transformers and switch gear.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Maladra?
Second.
Second by Alderman Bruno. Questions, comments? I think the question was already brought up, does anybody else have any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay, we're through that, unanimous again. Item 3J. Recommend draft resolution authorizing bid award for 2015, 2016 purchase of cable.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Sino?
Second.
Second by Alderman Cummings. Comments, questions? None, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion unanimous again. Item 3K. Recommend draft resolution authorizing easement agreement for 710 Easton Avenue for electric service upgrades.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Bruno, seconded by Alderman Sino. Comments? Go ahead, Alderman Simone.
Thanks, Chairman. What's the 20 dollar cost? Is that a, are we actually paying some, the homeowner 20 dollars? Or is that just a filler? We have to put something in?
We have to put something in.
Oh, okay.
It's a legal thing.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item 3L. Recommend draft resolution declaring surplus property, Electric Division, 1991 Fiber Trailer.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Kilburg, seconded by Alderman Sino. Comments, questions? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There, you're gonna have a quick first part of the meeting next week, unless you schedule something else. Item 3M. Recommend draft resolution declaring surplus property for the Electric Division, 1996 Digger Derrick.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Cummings?
Second.
Second by Alderman Sino. Comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so far so good. Item 3N. Recommend draft resolution, first amendment to Exelon EEI Master Agreement.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Maladra?
Second.
Second by Alderman Bruno. Comments, questions? Alderman Bruno.
Hal, this is, this is just bookkeeping, just because of business relationships with Exelon changing?
That's correct. Exelon and Constellation merged, if we're to do business with Exelon in the future, it will be with the business entity Constellation, so...
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 3O. Recommend draft ordinance amending Title 11 zoning of the Geneva City Code, Section 11-12-6, regulations by sign type, Section 11-12-8, exempt signs, and Section 11-2-2 definitions.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Maladra?
Second.
Second by Alderman Singer. And I think we turn the floor over to Mr. DeGroot.
Thank you. I'm just gonna go through each one of these three proposed text amendments quickly. Back in 2011, the Plant Commission recommended approval of a comprehensive rewrite of the city sign regulations. Before that, they hadn't been amended since 1969, they were actually in our, in our building regulations prior to that, instead of the zoning ordinance, but since they were adopted, we've had several amendments since then, as we kind of work through, work through the regulations, and the ones being addressed tonight, the wall signs on multi-tenant, or multi-owner, tenant-owner buildings, window signs, and the definition of the term frontage, are ones that kind of have repeat questions, and we thought it best to amend the ordinance to clarify the issues that we're seeing. So starting with the first one, on multi-tenant buildings. The current sign regulations restrict a tenant in a multi-tenant building to one wall sign for each side of the building that has a street frontage, and the intent of that regulation is really to, to prevent the proliferation of signs on multi-tenant buildings. What the ordinance did not contemplate was if an establishment, establishment moved into more than one tenant space, which is the case with Buttermilk. You could see they, they actually occupy three tenant spaces in a multi-tenant building, but they're only allowed the one sign. Their desire when they moved in was to have another sign either above each of these tenant spaces, or on the awning that said pancakes, biscuits, or had their, had their logo. Another situation is All Chocolate Kitchen occupies two tenant spaces, is contemplating moving into a third, and they would like to have their logo on an awning above each one of those, each one of those spaces to identify their, their entire building space. Again, under the current regulations, that's not allowed. So what staff is proposing is an amendment that would allow up to one additional sign for each additional tenant space, not to exceed 20 square feet, that would be kind of an ancillary, ancillary sign to what's allowed for the, the main sign, which is 40 square feet.
So I have a question, when you say the intent was to prevent proliferation of signs, what is the proliferation of signs exactly?
Well, if you could, if you could picture, you know, three different tenants in each one of these spaces, each of being allowed to have more than one wall sign.
Okay.
In this case, what you vote's being allowed is one additional sign that would otherwise be, be there anyway for a different tenant.
Got it. Alderman Simone.
Is it either or, awning or?
Right, it's a wall sign, awning sign, or canopy sign.
Okay.
Right.
That Buttermilk sign, how many square feet would that be?
That's right around the 40 square feet.
Right at 40?
Yeah.
So you're saying that...
About half of that would be allowed.
Ancillary would be half of that.
Why would you make it half versus proportional to the space?
Because the intent really is to, is to help them identify their entire space, not, not to have them kind of have redundant signage, kind of encourage the accessory signage.
Are we prohibiting redundant signage?
We're not, we don't regulate the content of a sign, no, so we're not expressly prohibiting.
Oh, they could go Buttermilk, 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 just smaller, smaller.
They could if they would not.
And we're okay with that?
Again, we don't, we don't regulate the content of signs.
Well, if we regulate the number of signs, we might want to contemplate regulating the content, not the duplicate.
That's a legal issue, Tom, that we have...
Oh, it is?
Yeah. Unfortunately, it's a First Amendment matter that I don't think this council's willing to tread upon.
Oh, okay, all right, sorry.
In our experience, every time we've had the request, it's been for kind of that accessory signage, to identify the product they're selling, or to have their logo.
Okay.
So if there's no questions on that one, that amendment was recommended unanimously for approval by the Plant Commission. The second amendment is regarding the window signs, which you also can see here in this Buttermilk example. The current regulations say that if a window sign is placed on the interior of the glass, it's exempt, it doesn't require a permit, but if it's placed on the exterior of the glass, it does require a permit, and it counts towards the allowable signage, so it's taken off that 40 square feet. I'm not really sure what the intent of that regulation is, from more than a few feet away, you can't really tell the difference between a decal that's on the interior of the glass or the exterior of the glass. In either case, there's no real need to have the, the building department issue a permit and inspect the application of a decal to the window, so what we're recommending is that we just eliminate that language, and say window, all window signs, interior or exterior are exempt, and don't count against the allowable sign area.
Alderman Simone.
Thank you. Are we just talking decals, or any window signage? And what I, the reason I ask the question is because, for instance, in one of my places, I have box signs. If you put box signs on the outside, you've got issues with wind and everything else, I mean, if, you know what I mean?
Or like an open sign?
Yeah, I mean, you've got potential hazard issues, or safety issues. If it's decals, I can, I understand, but...
We can, we can clarify that language in the ordinance.
Is that what you're asking, Alderman?
Yeah, I mean, if, if it's decals, I can, inside out, it makes a difference, but if it's any kind of window signage, for example, box signs, open signs, those kind of things. I don't know, it would scare me not to get some kind of permit to at least make sure that there, it's being installed properly.
I, I understand the concern. We can, we can make sure the language is clear, that it's a decal affixed to the window.
Alderman Kil, I, I'm sorry, Alderman Simonium?
Yes, Tom, okay.
Alderman Kilberg.
Wasn't this a technicality? We had the discussion with the History Center over?
Yes, yes.
That was a few years ago, three years ago?
Yeah, a couple of years ago.
Thank you.
Any other? Mr. DeGroot, just one question for, I, I think, so if you get to some of the bars in town, they have advertising inside their windows, old style, whatever type beers. Is that still gonna be kept behind the glass then, or, or how do we regulate those?
I think that was to Alderman Simonium's point, that if it's, if it's not a decal that's affixed to the window flat, that it should be on the interior of the glass.
Okay, that's fine then. Okay. Any other questions on this? Because I know you have one more area.
That amendment was also unanimously recommended for approval by the Plan Commission. The final amendment was on the definition of the term frontage. In the, in the current regulations, we say that an establishment must have street frontage to be allowed to have a wall sign, and that that frontage, that part of the building can't be more than fifty feet away from a public street or alley. And I think this was a carryover from the sixty-nine regulations, because we have several examples in town where the, the buildings more than fifty feet away from the public street, and they do have wall signs, Engstrom Plaza, the Ace Harbor Plaza, even CBS on the, on the east side, and most everything on, on Randall Road through PUDs. But this, this regulation's in the code and it hasn't been consistently enforced. So if you go to kind of the backside of Buttermilk, they have street frontage on Hamilton Street, but are not allowed wall signs because it's separated for more than fifty feet away from the street. Can't see that there's been any adverse impacts from, from the signs that are allowed when they're more than fifty feet away from the street, so we're recommending just to strike that language from the ordinance.
Comments, questions? Alderman Simonium.
Thank you. I, I, I want to go back real quick, David, to the, the window signs, that they can, they cannot occupy any more than fifty percent of the total window area of the building facade. It's not the individual window pane, it's the entire, so in other words, if you've got, let's just say a hundred feet of window facade, you could go a hundred percent coverage on fifty feet and no coverage on the other fifty feet?
That, that's the way, that's the way it's written, yes.
Okay.
We haven't really had any issues with, with windows being covered at, at a hundred percent, or anybody really kind of going beyond that fifty percent max.
Okay. And you're okay with that? The facade versus the pane?
Again, it, it hasn't been an issue at this point. Something we could revisit if we need to.
Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And that, that coverage, if you've got text, we're talking about drawing a box around that text, am I right? That is not just the space that the font takes up.
Right, we kind of use, we use the rule of two imaginary squares.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Anyone from the ordinance audience? Hearing none seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item, item three P, consideration of text amendments to Geneva City Code to amend Section eleven dash five residential districts of the zoning ordinance related to the allowable floor area for consolidated zoning lots in Residential Area One. David, I think you're up, do you have anything to say?
Do you need a motion or?
Yeah, I need a motion. Motion by Alderman Maladra.
Second.
Second by Alderman Bruno. Now the floor is yours.
Thank you. Okay, so back in two thousand and one, Mayor Burns appointed a teardown infill task force to address teardown infill regulations within the city. The task force made recommendations, which were eventually approved by the City Council in two, two thousand and three, and then those regulations were revisited and amended slightly in two thousand and six. The teardown infill regulations create separate zoning regulations for our older subdivisions, any subdivision that's, was established prior to nineteen eighty-nine. Those subdivisions collectively are now known as Residential Area One. The purpose of the teardown infill regulations is really to make sure that infill development is compatible with the form and scale of the city's established residential neighborhoods. The restrictions on the maximum allowable floor area in the zoning regulations play kind of the largest role in controlling the overall mass and scale of infill development. Within Residential Area One, the maximum allowable floor area is determined by the lot size, and there's a specific table that was adopted in the zoning ordinance that gives you your allowable floor area based on your lot size. And it kind of goes in two hundred and fifty square foot increments. The formula that's used in that table is regressive, meaning as the lots get bigger, the additional floor area allowed gets smaller. And the intent of that is to encourage, again, homes that are compatible with the scale of other properties in established residential neighborhoods, even though they may be located on larger lots. Recently, city staff has approached by a resident in Residential Area One who purchased an adjoining property, the intent being to demolish that property, and use what would be the allowable floor area for that property for an addition onto their existing home. Consolidating the two properties into one zoning lot would allow for less floor area than what would be allowed if the lots were built separately. Bear with me here, I know this is kind of a complicated example to walk through, but using this example that's on the screen, lots one and two are both improved lots with a lot area of eighty-four hundred square feet. The maximum allowable floor area for each lot is two thousand six hundred and forty-five square feet. So in this example, the principal building on Lot One would remain, and the principal building on Lot Two would be demolished. The new zoning lot of sixteen thousand eight hundred square feet would be allowed a maximum allowable floor area of four thousand and thirty-four square feet, instead of just simply taking the two thousand six hundred and forty-five times two for a total of five thousand two hundred and ninety square feet. So what this represents is a loss of a little over twelve hundred square feet of floor area when you, when you have one building instead of the two buildings. The resident approached the city looking for what their options were to pursue this addition. They're not eligible for a zoning variation before the zoning board of appeals because their relief they would need exceeds the twenty percent maximum increase allowed through the variation process. So we worked with the resident to craft a, a text amendment for consideration, and what the text amendment proposes is that instead of consolidating the lots into one and going back to that table, that you would simply add what would have been allowed here for a new residence, sorry, Lot Two for a new residence, add that to the new zoning lot for both properties. And this, this was recommended for denial by the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission stated that the purpose of the teardown infill regulations was to encourage homes that are compatible with the mass and scale of existing homes, and that this is not consistent with that intent. They also expressed concern that the proposed amendment might encourage teardown development in our established neighborhoods. It's kind of the, the quick rundown. Be happy to clarify if I need to.
Alderman Maladra.
So it's, it, it seems to me that by purchasing the property that is Lot Two for the purpose of building a single structure across the two lots, he is creating one. It's a legal technicality that it is two, but he's creating one big property for that structure. And the reason that we came up with the regressive nature of the teardown and infill stuff was, I mean, we did that on purpose, not, not to prevent this specific thing, but he's creating one big lot, and we, we did a lot of work to come up with a regressive formula to apply when you're on a big lot. So it seems to me that what you're proposing tonight is exactly counter to what we spent a long time developing. So I, I don't like this one.
Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, it gave me pause too. I was at the Plan Commission meeting, and, you know, I understand you're, I mean, you're trying to work with a resident. The fact that you drafted something is not necessarily meaning you're a big fan of it. The, we did spend a lot of time on the teardown infill, and it's got a, I think it's got a valuable, valuable purpose. This is a little unusual because this property's already between two pretty highly developed properties. But if we change this text this way, I, I really think it does open up a loophole that there could be a lot more demolition in our established neighborhoods. So I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm not a fan. I would probably support the, the commission in, in denial here, but as an aside, I look at the, the CMAP study, the Homes for a Changing Region too, however this plays into it. You know, we're, we're gonna have a glut of really big homes, and I'm, I'm not, not only do I support the Plan Commission, but I, I don't think incentivizing an even larger home fits into our long-term housing mix needs, so I'll probably vote to deny this also.
Any other comments, questions? David, one question. I mean, is, is, was this text amendment just to be made for an addition, or could new construction also would be getting the same formula?
If, if, if it was new construction on Lot Two separately?
No, both, if you buy two lots, tear them both down.
Tear them both down. What the amendment is proposing is in that, in that situation, you would, you would go back to the table.
So it does, so this is only if they're putting an addition on?
Onto an existing home and tearing down one home, instead of consolidating two homes and eliminating them both. And if I can just speak to Alderman Bruno's comment, the reason that we worked with the resident to propose this, this text amendment is because there was really no other avenue for them to, to have their concerns heard. They're not eligible for the variation. Another option would be to take the property out of Residential Area One, they could file a petition to do that, but this is one property, kind of right in the middle of a stretch of properties in Residential Area One, and that would really be a spot zoning case. So this was kind of the only, the only avenue for them to have the, the consideration heard.
But unfortunately for them, it hits right to the heart of the whole teardown purpose. So, you know, for us to agree to this is effectively to say, you know, bigger the better, which is exactly counter to teardown and infill.
Had they approached the city before they actually bought the additional lot and property, or was this an afterthought?
It was after they had purchased the home that they approached the city.
Alderman Maladra, I, I wasn't on the council when, when this went through. Was that really to stop teardowns, or really additions to houses also? I mean, you've had more.
Well, the infill component is to, is to work on reconstruction that is consistent with the neighborhood. And I don't, I don't know, we differentiated between a complete teardown and a rebuild or a major addition. And, you know, we can call this an addition, but we're not just building a little bigger bathroom, this is, you know, increasing the size of the structure substantially.
Well, we're twelve hundred square feet roughly, right, in this case?
Well, in, in the example that's, that's here, I gotta have my... Under the existing regulations, it would be allowed an addition of about fourteen hundred square feet, where under the proposed text amendment, that fourteen hundred square foot addition could go up to almost twenty-six hundred square feet, so doubling the size of the home.
Okay.
Which is what is allowed in Residential Area Two, the, the newer subdivisions.
All right, and then when we speak about the substantially developed properties that are around it, those substantially developed properties were developed under existing code, so to back away.
Oh, I, I, yeah, the, yeah, one of the properties was, I believe, as I understand, was the last permit issued before we changed the...
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I wish there was a solution, but I think doing what we're describing here is, is compromising, I think, a really important part of our zoning.
All right. Alderman Simonium.
Thank you, Chairman. David, can you define for me how the city looks at floor area? What's the definition of floor area?
We have about a, a two-page definition of floor area of Residential Area One. It's, it's much different than the, the kind of the standard floor area ratio where you just take point four and multiply it by the, the lot size. That's what we use in, in Residential Area Two, which would basically allow if you have a lot that's twice as big, a home that's twice as large. In this case, we're, we're... To break it down quickly, we're taking horizontal planes through the building and using the floor area at those horizontal planes. So we have the finished first floor elevation, we have the twenty-foot mark and the twenty-eight foot mark, and we're using the actual mass of the building at those different planes. If you can kind of picture that, cutting through the house, and using that to calculate our floor area. We're also including exposed foundations for walkout basements, so we kind of discourages the artificial walkout basement, which increases the mass of buildings. We give bonuses for garages that are either side-loaded or located in a rear yard, which is more consistent with the older homes in, in the older neighborhoods. And then it kind of accommodates for that additional pavement on the driveway too, to get to those detached garages. So it's, in, in Residential Area One, the, the definition of floor area is really geared less towards living space and more towards the actual form and mass of the building. We, we have about a ten-page worksheet that walks applicants through it.
So it's not just, it's not, it's just not a simple formula to say twenty-six hundred and forty-five square feet of literal floor space?
It's a simple table to figure out what would be allowed for a property based on its lot size, but to actually calculate the floor area of a proposed home or an existing home, it's, it's a much more complicated formula.
Now, are these folks here trying to get, are they literally trying to get twice the size of their home? Is that what the, is that what their intent is?
They're not trying to double the size of their home, but the home that's existing in this case exceeds what would be allowed under the current regulations, because it was permitted prior to the teardown infill regulations. So they're, they're seeking an addition onto this, and being a riverfront property, they would have the exposed basement, so a lot of their floor area gets lost in, in that exposed walkout basement.
So anything prior to the ordinance back then was not grandfathered?
In its existing condition, but a non-conformity, you can't, you can't further increase the non-conformity, so if it's, if it exceeds what's allowed, you can't, you can't add onto it.
Okay. One, one last question. Do you see this as a potential problem moving forward, or is this, do you believe, an isolated incident?
This is the only incident where we've had a resident really desire to have their, their concerns heard, but I do see it as kind of cracking the door open and possibly having unintended consequences.
Is there a appetite by the council to take these on a case-by-case basis, based on the intent?
It's gonna be spot zoning, I think. Not gonna allow, I, I think we're gonna issue spot zoning at that point.
Okay.
So I think we really have to make a change to the, to the ordinance if, if we're gonna move forward, Tom. Any other questions, Alderman Simonium?
No, thank you.
Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As far as cracking the door open, I think that's, I think it could be kicking the door open in terms of finding two smaller homes, you know, anywhere in our older neighborhoods, and just buy them both and, and put up the big one. I, I think that does, like I said, kick the door open.
But that's not what this is doing. This is only an addition to the existing home. It's not knocking both down, correct?
As proposed, it would allow you to double the size of the allowable floor area if you're preserving one of the homes.
You have to preserve one of the homes, so it's not, you can't tear down both and build a big one. It's, it's an addition to the existing, one of the existing homes.
I think that the concern is that it might encourage that pursuit though, to, to find smaller homes adjacent to a good-sized home for a teardown.
Thank you.
And then there's, you know, like what constitutes an addition if I leave one wall up as a teardown. I, you know, it's, we're going on over all this stuff.
Any other comments, questions? We're gonna take a roll call vote, please. Mike Bruno.
Nay.
Point of order.
Yes.
Could you explain what a nay?
A nay vote, okay, a yes vote, we'll move it forward to the council, making the change to vote on the changes. A no vote would, would end it right here, that it would not go forward. Mike Bruno.
Nay.
Tara Burkhart.
Nay.
Don Cummings.
Nay.
Dean Kilberg.
Nay.
Greg Maladra.
Nay.
Richard Marx.
Nay.
Mary Sino.
Nay.
Tom Simonium. Tom Simone.
Yea.
Ron Singer.
Nay.
Eight-one is what I've got, so the motion will die right here. Will not move forward to the council. Item 3Q, recommend draft ordinance adopting prevailing wages.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Kilburg, second by Alderman Maladra. Comments, questions? Anything? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any new business for the council? Committee, I should say, committee of the whole. Hearing none, seeing one. Upcoming meetings, special committee of the whole meeting will be on next Monday night following the city council meeting to continue our discussion on the historic preservation ordinance. And I need a motion.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Alderman Simone and second by Alderman Sinno. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting's closed. There we go.